Guys, we're gonna leave the station now. All right, you got it opened up, all right. I would like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop for October 18th, 2023. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Baldwin?
Here.
Muncie?
Here.
Yo. Dean?
Here.
Stanton? Gardner?
Here.
Lewis?
So, we have quorum. I have heard from the three missing council members, they all have very good reasons for not being here. Could I support a motion to excuse Leo, Lewis, and Stanton?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion to excuse Leo, Stanton, and Lewis from today's council workshop?
Thank you. Motion Baldwin, second gardener, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Do we have any agenda changes for this afternoon's workshop?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, if we could, just have a brief discussion about Friday's open house for the airport property.
Okay. Let's motion to include the airport property as a, I would put it down as D, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Muncie? All right, do you need a roll call for our agenda changes, Jamie? Voice, all in favor, I'll say yes.
Yes.
Yes, that's unanimous, so we'll put PPW, it's ODC, isn't it, ODC presentation?
ODC presentation.
ODC presentation.
SOAR analysis, ODC SOAR analysis.
ODC SOAR analysis, that will be six D, great. Any other additions, deletions from the agenda? Hearing none, we have no guest speakers this afternoon. We do have public comment open, I will open it up to folks that are here in the audience. Please approach, state your name and address for the clerk's benefit and those on Zoom.
And Fox, council representative to the fair district board, I just want to let you guys know that I will not be here on Monday. So, I'll be out of town, Jamie, I will on, before noon on Friday, I don't know what time you get the stuff out.
Two P M. Thursday.
Thursday?
Two P M.
Okay, well then I'll get it, I'll do the report tonight and get it to you tomorrow in time to have it in your agenda, but I won't be here to amplify, I'm a sort of disappointed because there are a number of things on there I have some interest in, but talk about that whenever the time comes, but it'll be written for Monday.
Very good, thank you, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Sam.
Great, I see nobody else in the room interested in public comment, happy to open up public comment to anyone who is on the Zoom call, feel free to raise your hand. I don't see any hands raised, I will just call everyone's attention that we do have City Manager Ryan Heiss and Ryan Cummins from the city both on the, on the Zoom call, so they are available, since this is just, this is not a voting meeting, we're just going to have discussions, I think it's completely appropriate, and I'm looking at legal counsel to allow them to participate via Zoom in a workshop setting, and I'm getting a nod from legal counsel, so thank you for that. Very good, that will close public comment. That takes us to discussion items, six A, discussion of playground naming, or I think it should be a park or play, a park naming, but Becken, and we all know that this regard regards our former mayor and longtime member of council for some forty-two years, Mark Becken, so Russ, you brought it to council's attention, do you want to kick it off?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you very much, good afternoon, everybody. If anyone recalls last fall, we had a nice presentation for Mark when he left council, we had a slide presentation, and I always taught, I always teased Mark, I said, you know, Mark, if you stay around long enough, we're going to name something after you, and it's highly, I think, given his service to the community and the number of things that he's done for the community, that it would be appropriate to name the Southeast Multipurpose Court Basketball Court at the Village Square in Mark's memory. Mark is a big sports enthusiast, he's been involved with the public schools and the sports up there, as well as, you know, city contributions, and I'm hoping there will be support for that, I think there'll be community support for that, I've talked with several people that said that would be an appropriate recognition for Mark's service. Mark is by far the most longest-serving council member the city has had, forty-two years is, is a long time to be serving at this table, and I just think it's an appropriate recognition for the service that he's provided. The question comes up, though, is the city, I, in my experience, has two plague, or not playground, two park naming experiences, one is the Mildred Peterson Preserve. I was mayor at the time when that was actually given to the city and did the presentation with the Peterson family, and the Coughlin, which Mark actually was a key player in the Coughlin Park naming, and the contribution to buy that property. What I don't know is if the city has a policy regarding naming parks. We have a policy regarding contributions for recognizing like on park benches and things of that nature, but I don't know if the city's got a policy regarding a situation like this. Most municipalities do, most municipalities limit any type of naming to a non-serving council member or a non-serving person from the city, or, you know, other situations. So that would be something I would think we want to discuss in terms of putting a policy together, but I don't want to let that get in the way of what I think is going to be something I think we can get full support from the council community on to name that parcel for Mark, I talked with Scott Herbert about this last fall, and we kind of debated a few things about where it might, and I've talked with Ryan Heiss too, and this, this, this was one that just kind of settled to be an appropriate one for Mark. So if there's better choices or better suggestions, open to that too, just, I don't want to, I'd like to see us move on, move on something here, but do so appropriately and respectfully.
Yeah, I remember the discussion after, after Mark's last council meeting, and I guess I would just say, not, I would not say in memory of Mark, I don't think we want to, I don't think we want to, he's still very much with us.
In honor.
In honor, yeah, let's, yeah, just, let's not, you know, touch wood for our friends and neighbors. Yeah, and the policy, what we do, I, you know, once again, you always want to be careful about creating a precedent, and Ryan, I think you were involved in some of the early discussions, I remember seeing some, we were, we were talking things like streets, we were talking parks, do you have any thoughts?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I think, Peter, you're in the room, correct?
We have, we have Peter with us, yeah, we have Peter with us.
Yeah, no, so Peter has a legacy, memory of parks that have been donated, donated in contribution, so I think he's the best to speak to this issue, thank you.
I don't, there's no policy that I'm aware of, but I can't, the policy is in the past with the Coughlin and some of the other things, is how many zeros are behind the one.
Peter, how long ago was it, was it six or seven years ago when they did the, for Officer Jones, when they, remember when we pulled that inner urban, the whole building up and redid it? Could you go back into the, there was no policy back then, couldn't you go back to those notes and find out how they went about doing that?
Look in Jones Park, I'm sure Kurt left a file somewhere.
That's what I mean, would there be a file somewhere?
It wasn't named then, but that was a large donation by Mr. Police Chief's son.
Right.
Well, he basically paid for.
For the pavers and all that, yeah, right.
We, yeah, we, that's probably the last one, because that really never had a name over there, it was just the information booth, and that was it.
But maybe there might be something in there that, you know, be helpful.
Really, no, we call it a park, but really, it's all on the road right away, so. But yeah, there's not one that I'm aware of, but that would be a good idea, we could look back now, paperwork we can find, because that was probably ten years ago.
Maybe ten years ago, yeah.
For Jones?
Yes, yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a dedication plaque out there with the date on it, so we can look then, so.
Right.
Have a Coughlin Park, it was the Coughlin Flame, we wrote out a check, and we went back, then they wanted gazebo, then they wrote another check for the gazebo, so. That's the only thing I'm aware of, the rest of them, I think, were all given by families that.
Yeah, Peterson, yeah, Peterson Preserve was a, was a gift.
Cook was like that, Wicks was like that, so.
Yeah. And this is the only time that I recall that we've had a suggestion made for a council member, formerly serving council member, and I would view this as being a very unique situation of longtime service to the community, I, so I, I'm not sensing any opposition to it, but I think we need to, I personally would like to see the city put together a very simple policy around this for future use by future councils, this may come up again, I don't know if anybody else is going to serve for that amount of time, but it might come up again, and I think it would be helpful to have something in writing going forward, I don't want to let that stand in the way of, of having further discussion about what might be appropriate here for Mark.
Helen, any thoughts?
I, I think that we should be careful and, and take into consideration the idea that certainly, you know, council member, former council member Becken has served the city well, and that I think you could say similar things about several people in different capacities, may, you know, not just as a council person or whatever, so we, I think we have to be careful when it's really easy to name something after somebody when they've donated a large sum of money, I think it gets a little bit dicier when we do it for another reason, so I just think that whatever we do, we should be able to have it be something that makes sense, and isn't, isn't just carved out in one certain way.
There's, there's two pieces, thank you, there's two pieces for me, one, one is, is looking at if there is any precedent, any past practice, you've mentioned Jones, a policy, Ryan, I don't know if you've got any experience or not, but if, if you can bring us any recommendations in terms of a policy, that's one bucket, and then the other bucket, once again, is because we are still blessed by having Mark here in town, I, I would want to make sure that if we do anything, you know, the park was fitting of that, and in that, you know, it's like, you know, the nets falling off the basketball.
Right. The paint is peeling. A rededication or something, yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
You know, so I would want to make sure that, you know, although I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, I wouldn't recommend loading down PPW with trying to come up with a policy, I, it would be useful for PPW to be able to give us some advice on, you know, the, the ideal time to do this would be X, you know, when we've just repaved, we've just restripped, we've put in new, you know, we've got, you know, we've got another donor that's given us like new basketball hoops or some, something, so, you know, you, you don't want to slap somebody's name on something that's kind of in dire need of.
Yeah.
Of work, so I mean, I, I would want to make sure it's thought out, I think we want to make sure the right people are in town when we do it, it's the right time of year to do it, you know, there's, there's a few little details, so those are the kind of, those are in my head, the two buckets that I'm kind of thinking of, and Ryan, you've gone off mute, so anything else you'd like to add?
No, you're correct, Mr. Mayor, I did work on a donation policy and with conference, and then I agreed that Mark Becken would be sad if the basketball court named after him was turned into, let's say, a pickleball court. So we just, I mean, we have to be super sensitive to your naming rights, and I, I think you should create a policy around that, so willing to help.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I would say a policy is the first place to start.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Give ourselves at least some guidance around this.
Ryan, can you take that on, I, I don't disagree, you could take on kind of coming up with some policy recommendations, maybe in consult, consulting with, with Peter and his institutional knowledge on what we've done in the past, and come back to us, and then we can take it from there, and then, you know, then we'll think about the other steps, like, you know, when's, when is that park looking right, and when, when has it been planned for PPW to give it the necessary refresh, so it's fitting for, for a ceremony?
Step one is certainly the policy, I would.
Yeah, I agree, okay, so can, is, is this a good path forward, do we feel good about this?
Yeah, we're good with it from staff standpoint, thank you.
Okay.
A quick question for Peter, so Peter, Herbert Street, Simonton Street, Newham, which was changed because of this previous street name, the middle name of William Gay Butler, different situation, but Herbert and Simonton particularly, named after two former, Bruce after, Bruce is a former superintendent of DPW who served longer than Mark did and on council, fifty-plus years, do you remember, was there a policy around that, was, what was the discussion at council at that point?
Simonson Drive, wasn't that Bruce's dad gave him the property for that road?
Might have been.
I think that, that one I could ask Bruce, because I think that was property that his parents owned, and they needed it to the city to make that street through there, I'm not for sure, but Herbert, Scott might know, I think that's his great-great-grandfather or something like that.
Yeah, great-grandfather.
If it was named after somebody, or the family gave him the property, gave him the land for to have the street there, that I don't know.
Yeah, more the direction I'm going is, was there a policy applied to that, because it's a very similar situation, even though they weren't council members, they were community service, that's, that's kind of where I'm going with it.
I had to look to when that happened, so.
Scott gets back from mat leave on Monday, so maybe, maybe just have a chat with him.
His dad might know, or.
Yeah, he might be able to do some research with his dad, maybe, yeah, sounds good, are we good there?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, yeah.
Stay up there. Where's Stanislavski Street going to be?
Right now, not picking up green signs, I mean.
We don't have that budget for lettering, I don't think, yeah. But, yeah, if, Ryan, if you could work with the team, you know, like Scott may have some intel, it looks, you could tap some of the institutional knowledge here and come back to us at the appropriate time.
Yep, yeah, if we could, could we maybe have a preliminary report on this at the first meeting in November, first workshop in November? I've done some research out there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of municipalities that have pretty standard policies, so I think we can probably use that as kind of a guide for us, I do want to keep this moving forward, and I take some responsibility for maybe not moving this forward earlier, so I don't think it's going to be a big lift to create at least some ideas and policy around this by the first meeting in November.
I'd be inclined to leave it to the manager when he's, when he feels, I, I don't, once again, I want us to stick to our strategic plan and stay on task for these big projects, we have a number of big projects, I think we all know about AT&amp;T, so I would, I wouldn't want, I would want Ryan to be the judge of, you know, when he can bring it to a workshop, I, I don't like pulling staff off task from our, from our overarching, you know, mission that we outline every December, so I would prefer to leave it to Ryan to bring it to us when he's got something. And Ryan, does that sound good to you?
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, all right, groovy. All right, next item is the right-of-way permit for the ugly sweater pub crawl. Who's going to discuss this? This is from April Gundy, submitted application, and banner sign, da-da-da.
Stained event she did, was this the second or third year, maybe even longer than that, she's been doing it for quite a few years.
Okay, and this is not a road, road closure, closure request, this is just signage?
Just her banner on the pallet sign.
Okay. Okay, seems like something we do all the time, any discussion of the council on this one, any thoughts? All right, then I think we can, we can move this forward for a vote on Monday, unless there's any other discussion. Very good, special event, application Veterans Day, now this is one I am very familiar with, and it looks like my friend Robert Boyce, the commander of the American Legion chapter, has put in a detailed application, so Jamie, are we looking pretty good here, we just waiting a few sign-offs, maybe fire, well, we don't even need that, because we're not marching, it's just a ceremony, so it should be pretty straightforward.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, can you talk into the mic? Get the mics a little closer.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, we were just, you know, I'll go back to six B real quick, you know, that'll be on the agenda Monday, looks straightforward, C, special event application for Veterans Day, Boyce, Mr. Boyce has got his permit, and Jamie says it's looking in order, she's moved it to the fire department, so it appears it's something we can vote on Monday as well, so I think those two items can be ready for a vote on Monday.
Thank you.
Any questions? You good, all right. All right, well, that takes care of ABC, and then our addition to the agenda is the ODC SOAR analysis, six D, Russ, you, you put that on the agenda, go ahead and.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, there's an open house Friday afternoon at three o'clock, we got notice yesterday by the ODC, and it's called SOAR, I think, as I, I read the press release several times. So what I want to try to understand is, I will not be able to be there because of homecoming festivities on Friday, so towns could be busy with a lot of other stuff on Friday afternoon, but what I want to better understand is, where's the Parks and Public Works Committee going with this? The presentation of the report is that, I, I'm just trying to better understand exactly where this is going, and I emphasize the airport property is not a park. It's a vacant property, it's used by the city for dumping trash waste, or yard waste from the streets, it's not a park, so I'm just curious how this jumped ahead of malt, malt head, and Park Street from a priority standpoint.
I don't know that it jumped ahead from, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please, go ahead, Helen.
I don't know that I would characterize it as jumping ahead, it was this, so the SOAR analysis is part of what the ODC had to do, we wanted to make sure that we had no environmental concerns there, so we had to take a look at the environmental sustainability, catalog native species and things like that that we have there, all of this does is, this was an add-on to that, a nice-to-have, it's not a requirement, it's not a Parks and Public Work meeting, it's, it's not even required to be an open meeting, it's SOAR analysis, just strengths, opportunities, results, and aspirations, so basically, if anyone from the public is curious about it and wants to make a comment about what they think would be great there, we don't have any big deliverable that's going to come off of this, that now that we've got this, we're going to definitely go in this one direction, that's not the point of this, the point of this is just to be open and transparent to the city and to the residents about property that they own, and to see if they have any ideas and would like to express some, it doesn't, we can do more than one thing at one time, this didn't jump in front of any other park, it didn't, and it, there's just, I don't, I don't see that as the same thing, I don't see it as, we have this park, we, we have this, we're delineating as a park, and so it's, we're going to put it ahead of anything else, we can certainly move forward on any other projects, and we are, obviously, so, yeah, that's all, it's a SOAR analysis, it's, it's going to be a, a great presentation by ODC, who's been a wonderful company to partner with, and historically throughout our entire tri-community area and really West Michigan, and I'm looking forward to it, and I would encourage anyone from the public to attend.
Yeah, I've, I've been promoting it to folks, I have friends that are in the township that live close to that, that parcel, in fact, we had a good discussion, a number of us did, we were at the middle schools and high schools' first cross-country meet in the township at the area where the dog park is, which, actually, there is a connection, and John Vanderby can speak very eloquently about this, there's a connection into the airport property where there are trails, they're not yet suitable for, for us to do cross-country meets, but.
That'll be something I expect to come up a lot.
I know that the high school track and cross-country team has been interested, and I know we've got a number of volunteers that are chopping at the bit to help out with, with, you know, trails, which there already are trails, but they've become overgrown, I've, I've done, I think, two trips into that, into that property and walked the trails, and we did budget for this analysis from what you see, didn't we? The council did approve.
Approved it, and this was part of their environmental and sustainability, and then this was actually tacked on, like, again, this is, is a nice-to-have, and is an opening for the public to speak on, and so, like, again, looking forward to it, and it, it does, it, it ties in with our five-year Parks and Rec Plan, we're, we're working on that, interconnecting trails is a big priority for not just us, but for our sister communities, and, and also with our schools, they've been asking really heavily to get in there and be able to use the trails that already exist, to have those legitimized, so that our, our, our wonderful cross-country athletes can participate and actually hold home meets.
And as an open meeting, I believe we'll go, and Jamie, I'm going to look at you, we're going to go above and beyond the OMA requirements, we are going to Zoom, Zoom this meeting, so people can watch it by Zoom, and.
So it's a, it will be Zoom, I will say, though, it is an open house format, so.
Okay.
We won't be seated at the tables, if, really, if you want to get the most out of it, you should attend in person.
Okay, good to know.
Recommend that.
I'm, I'm going to try to get away from work in time to attend it, I, I have to, I'll have to move some things around in my work schedule, but I'm going to try to attend, will, will you be able to record it?
It's going to be recorded, and it's going to be zoomed and recorded, yes, and again, this, it didn't have, it's, it, we went out of our way to make it, OMA compliant, because I really am hoping to have a quorum there for PPW, but this is not a requirement, it wasn't required to be posted, it's not required to be a public meeting, it wasn't required to have advertised in the newspaper, we are proactively seeking out this engagement.
And PPW doesn't vote on policy, they bring recommendations.
Of course, not anything about that is going to come from the council.
There's nothing actionable that will come out of this, this is.
Not at all.
This is more just an outreach.
Yep.
Okay, good.
And, and, and thank you very much, I just, going forward, I would, as we receive reports and updates from the Parks and Public Works Committee, I'd, I'd like to receive more reports at our meetings when we have our committee reports, kind of hear some of the discussions that are going on, the airport property has been in the city's ownership for, you know, almost a hundred years, it was never used as an airport, it was intended for that purpose and never got used, as a matter of fact, there's probably some deeds with that property that might, that would have to be looked at in terms of use of the property, that may have been restricted at the time, something that the city will have to look at, where I'm going with this is that the property's best use may be this, it may be something else, it may be a sale, so I look at this as being an, it's great that people are paying attention to it, because it has been out of sight, out of mind for a number of years, as a matter of fact, most people in town, if you say go out to the airport property, they go, where is it?
Right.
Right, so I appreciate the interest, but I also appreciate as an asset of the city that has to be dealt with appropriately, and that would mean my position as a policy, council would want to take a position on the policy and the use of that property as an asset.
There will be no use of that property that is not sanctioned by council.
Yeah, so where I'm going with this, though, is that the property, I think, is really at the point now, we may want to engage, and McKenna actually does this, engage with a evaluation firm that will actually evaluate the property for different uses for the city to consider from a policy standpoint, all the way from sale to mixed use to whatever, I think it might be time, because of the interest that's coming in, that's coming into play, that the city might want to start thinking about that as a budget item for next year, is to hire someone to actually do that for the city, so we have a plan, as opposed to person, you know, just, just interests that, that come into play, does that, does that make sense where I'm going with it?
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, so I, that's something I would like to see councils, the policy, maybe start talking about, because it's a hundred seventy acres, and it's got some value to it, and I wouldn't want to presume to say that I know what the best value for the community is.
And I don't think that anyone, there's.
And I'm not saying that.
Here's what I would say about the airport property, the airport property has trails on it right now that have been used for snowmobiling and whatnot, and they need to be legitimized, right, I would say that from my perspective, as a resident, right now, if you go out to the airport property, which the city owns, which you as a resident is a taxpayer own, if you go out there right now, you are trespassing, and I don't think that that's acceptable, I think that this is owned by our citizens, by our residents, and I think that we have a right and responsibility, frankly, to go out there and see it, and there is nothing that opening up the already existing trails to our residents, in my view, doesn't take away from any other future use of that airport property.
I, I know from talking to our superintendent of public works that he has to deal with finding poachers, tree stands, dumping on the property.
There's a cost to leaving it.
So there is a cost to leaving it fallow, so I think, from my perspective, I think this is an ideal one that we should approach in our strategic planning session, because it is a complex property, it's, it's very complex, so I think we should discuss it as a council as a, as a whole, and, and try to prioritize it for our strategic plan, because it will take, as, I think, as you rightly pointed out, Russ, it will take resources to do things like evaluation, you know, it, it takes time from staff, I mean, you know, Scott has done a great job leading PPW's committee members through that, that park, so I think this one is, would be one that would be well-suited for our deeper dive that we do in December.
Well, just to state, there is nothing that PPW can do on or around the airport property with a SOAR analysis or anything else that is not sanctioned by council.
Yes.
That's the bottom line.
Yeah, no, we, we, I think we're all in agreement with that, so I think that this is a good one for, for the whole council to look at, and it is an important property, it is an important asset of the city, you know, and, and I do think, but I, I do support the fact that we, well, and we, I believe it was, I know it's a majority of us, it might have been a unanimous vote to actually give ODC the money to do this, and we might as well present that in a transparent way, transparent way to the public, and to get the discussion started, so I think to be continued, I, I would welcome a broader, blue-sky kind of conversation, maybe in December, because, yeah, it's, it's not a pure park, I, I agree with what you're saying, Russ, it's not a pure park, but it's also, it could also be utilized without any impact in the short term, you know, we had, you know, let's not forget, we had Commonwealth Edison, or, we, we had one of the utilities. Consumers, yeah. Consumers, I'm sorry, we had consumers interested in putting a substation there at one point, and I, I don't know, Ryan, if that went quiet or not.
Yeah, they went rogue, they're, they're gone.
Okay, good enough.
A good reason that they have it, yeah.
That explains that one, so, yeah, there has been interest in it before, do you have any other observations on this and the possible path forward as we continue to talk about it?
I do. I think there is some long-hanging fruit with the existing trails out there, but I've talked with Councilwoman Baldwin about it, and it's, you have to be super careful, because this, to Mr. Gardner's point, this has never been open to the public, and so if we do that, you have to review one, this covered by insurance, like, is this property covered by insurance, if you open the trails, do you have proper parking?
Restrooms. Restrooms.
ADA compliance. Do you have to have restrooms, yeah, so I mean, it's.
We don't do any of this without a SOAR analysis, or any of, like, all of the things that we're talking about, we need to have discussion.
Exactly.
And engagement, and that's all this is, discussion and engagement.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Thank you, Ms. Baldwin, for circling back on that important point, is that the SOAR analysis, just about, we're not going to design anything for the airport property, we're just going to review it and look at their analysis, so it's going to be an ongoing conversation.
Yeah, and thank you, Manager Heiss, and I would just emphasize that. Yeah, it, thank you, um, Manager Heiss. And I would just emphasize that I just don't want to set expectations or have someone set an expectation that something's going to happen. And it hasn't gone through the proper channels at this point because people are passionate. I get passionate about the projects that I really enjoy in town too. But I also have to think, well, it's got to go through a process. I just want to make sure we're not setting something up for.
Anything is bypassing any process, Russ.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm confident that we will follow the process. It's, it's clear how we set up PPW that anything's going to come through this council as a whole. And it will be very transparent. But Dan, Dan Fox, I'm glad you're here. When I was in that snowmobile club building, there is an old fire department apparatus, one of those old wagons with, with, with a hose reel on it. It's, it's in.
Snowbitters? The old snowbitters, the, the old senior center building, you mean?
I, in the old, in the old snowmobile club, the old senior center building, there is actually one, one of those. I think, I think it was a thing that people pulled. It, it, it was like a, it's like, it looks like a, a two-wheeled carriage with a hose reel on it.
The senior center.
Over by, do you?
It's on the airport property. It's.
Do you, do you remember when there used to be a snowmobile club? Okay.
That, that predates Dan. So you see, yeah.
It, it's in the building.
There's a lot of fire, fire department storage that they, like, it's packed to the gills that, that building is packed to the gills with fire department stuff. Um, maybe get, get some of them pallets out of there if they put those out there too. I think some of the pallets have been blamed on the fire department too, if they can get those out of there.
But, yeah, just for your benefit and, and the department's benefit, yeah, there, there, there is a piece of equipment that I, I don't know if it's a replica or if it's historic, so. It's, it's one of those. I think it's one of those.
Mr. Mayor, if Mr. Fox is talking, nobody on uh, Zoom can hear.
Uh, I'm sorry. Um, I was just letting Dan know that when we were visiting the property, we went into the old snowmobile club building and there is an old, what looks like a piece, piece of vintage firefighting apparatus, which may be of historic value to someone. So I just wanted to make sure that they were aware. Um, and I'm sure, I, I'm sure Mr. Fox can interface with Superintendent Heiss and get a visit himself and, or with a member of the fire department to say, just to be aware that it's there. I don't think it's causing any harm or it's in any danger at this point, but I didn't want you guys to. Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Is the city hall clock out there?
That I did not see. That I did not.
I'm on a mission. I'm on a mission for that.
That thing is packed to the gills for sure. That building is.
Might be in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, it's a little, once again, it's a fascin, it's a fascinating property. The stories, I think, probably could go on forever. But in any event, um, I would look forward to, you know, I'm looking forward to Friday and I'm looking forward to a continued discussion about it. But once again, the buck will stop at council if regarding any decision made about a hundred and seventy or eighty acres of city property. So that, let's all be, let's all just take a breath. It's going to be fine. We, you know, we're, we're not going to surprise anybody about it. We're going to keep, keep working through this. And, uh, and, and once again, I, I really do support what PPW is doing to not have any city asset be neglected. So I, I think this is a great example of demonstrating that, that we're keeping an eye on it. It should, it should cut back, that should help cut back on the poaching. Uh, it, 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 you know, people have a right, taxpayers have a right to access, you know, city property. So I, I think we should also think about that. So I'm very much in favor of this continuing, but I think we, as, as we progress, we'll bring more into the, into the equation. You guys may want to rescue your, your old hose reel. So, yeah. Uh, so with that, um, are we in good shape for uh?
I really appreciate having the discussion today. Thank you.
No, not at all. Not at all. Um, that concludes our discussion items. We are now at public comment. This is open forum. Uh, anyone offering public comment in the room? Go ahead, Dan. Once, once more for Jamie's benefit and the Zoom participants' benefit.
Dan Fox, uh, speaking as Dan Fox, not in any official capacity. I gotta say, I shared when I, when I read the thing, and I'll be here tomorrow, or Friday.
Friday.
Yeah, Friday, three o'clock, whatever. Partly because it just seemed to me like, and may, it, it is more in the, in the way it was written or whatever. It just seemed like there was like this head of steam and we got the Outdoor Discovery Center pitching in and looking at this, and now we're hearing about trails and yada, yada, on that property. And Russ said, I'm, I'm one of those people couldn't find that property if my life depended on it. And I assure you, I've never been there unless I happen to be there or out there for some other reason and didn't even know. Anyway, I, I thi, and I, I thought it was a good discussion today. I, I take you guys for sure at your word and, and professionalism as it relates to due process and getting everything in front of the public, whatever. But I think, and I mentioned this, I think I mentioned this, but sometimes I forget what I mentioned and what I just thought I mentioned. There's a, and Russ mentioned it just a little bit ago, kind of. There's a, and what I consider from an accounting standpoint, I'm not an accountant. I don't play one on TV. I live with one, but you are an accountant. Uh, critical piece of information that is sort of a priority because that is, as you rightly described, it's a city asset. It's a hundred and seventy acres. It's not connected to the city, which offers its own considerations. But a hundred and seventy acres, a lot of property. And the taxpayers own it, as you said. What's it worth on the market before you can make decision one? And certainly as a basis for any study, how much are we talking about? How much could the tech, how much could you put back in the city coffers if you sold it to, I can, I don't know, to a farm, to uh, uh, Perrigo, I don't know, whomever, a hundred and seventy acres, a big piece. I don't imagine there are all that many such things available. So I, thinking about that, I did my five-minute internet search. You know what an average acre of farmland in Allegan County or in Michigan, I guess, is worth on the market? I didn't either. Now, this is farmland. And as I say, I've never been out there, so I don't know if it's farmland or if it's all forest or whatever, but there are different valuations for different. But an average acre of farmland in Michigan is worth fifty, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Multiply that out, that's nine hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars for that piece of property, which let's round up, that's a million dollars, folks. If you had a million dollars right now, I might, you know, I'm just saying. How, I can't determine whether trails are a good deal or, or anything being built out there without at least having that piece of data, that piece of information. My end, I'm done.
Yeah.
What a period after the end of that sentence.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment in the room? Uh, I don't see any, uh, any other public comment on the Zoom call. Any hands raised on the Zoom? Uh, I don't see any. Jamie, do you? All right. Uh, that concludes public comment. Uh, we have no correspondence. Uh, we'll open it up to council comment. Uh, Russ, you want to kick it off?
Uh, no comment. Thank you.
All right, Gregory, anything?
My, uh, I was gonna let you know, yesterday was our inter-urban meeting. Our line, longtime treasurer uh, nominated me to serve as the inter-urban treasurer and uh, a board of edu, or board of uh, and so I'm excited to take on that new role. Laura, Lori Babinski is going to keep on uh, with the, with the, with the, with our board. Um, but uh, I'm excited to learn a new role. Um, and also Make-A-Wish benefit is this Saturday at nine thirty is when the drag show starts. I've been collecting donations all around town and we make the wish of a special child with a terminal disease. Uh, and that child is from Allegan County, is selected by the Make-A-Wish Foundation and uh, excited to do that this weekend.
Uh, no, just wanted to thank everybody uh, for the discussion and to remind folks that SOAR analysis is this Friday, three o'clock, right up here.
Great, thanks, Helen. Um, I'll just wrap it up by um, saying um, she, she's not here, but I would like to thank our very capable mayor pro tem, Lauren Stanton, for standing in for me the past couple of meetings. I'm now certified with CPR and the AED. So if anyone needs to have electrodes uh, attached to them and be given a large electric shock here in city council, I'm, be more than happy to do that. So uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
We have motion, Gardner.
Second.
Second, Muncie. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.